Our first order of business tonight is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Stedman with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge with us tonight as Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let us pray. Good and loving God, thank you for who you are and what you do. Thank you for the opportunity to live, work, and play in this wonderful community of Berkeley. Thank you for the increased voter turnout this past week. Regardless of how people voted or who they voted for, we thank you and are encouraged by the increase in participation in this democratic process. I pray, God, that you would be with the council tonight as they discuss and deliberate and decide. I pray that you would grant them wisdom and excellent judgment. I pray that you would be with all of us and bless us so that we might be a blessing to others as we serve one another in your love. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Up next is citizens' comments. You may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or any department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Good evening. Charles Terrell from Berkeley. A couple of little things here tonight. First off, there may have been a mistake made in the appointment to one of the people for the planning commission. One of the new appointees also holds another appointed position in the city. According to 90-17, people on the planning commission, that's not allowed. They're only allowed one, except one person from the planning commission can also be on zoning. So we need to get that one addressed. The other thing I'd like to talk about is PUDs. I have been educating myself and doing some research on PUDs, and one of the things that always comes up is PUD is covered by a contract, a contract, a contract, a contract. So I threw a Freedom of Information Act request. I got the contract for Harvard Commons. Been reading through Harvard Commons contract and going over it and over it, and I found an anomaly. There was to be an eight-foot-by-eight-foot cedar trellis erected in the green space, in the public space that was supposed to be there. It's not there. It's in the contract. It's in the drawings. There's a detail of what it's supposed to look like. There's a place where it's supposed to be. It's not there. That's pretty obvious and pretty blatant of something being missing. What assurances do we have that there's other things that are also not missing? Stormwater detention. How do we know that was done and that was done correctly? What assurances do we have of that? There's all kinds of other things with the buildings, you know, throughout the whole process that we don't have assurances. If something so obvious is missing, what else could be missing as well? And I really think that needs some investigation. One, because the contract is violated, if you will, because of this missing eight-by-eight cedar trellis. But also, has everything else in the contract been adhered to? So if we could ask that that be addressed as well as the planning commission appointment. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. I said, "Thank you." You're struggling today. I don't know what's going on. Okay. Seeing nobody else coming to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yes.
This is citizens' comments.
Okay. My name is Laura Boos, 1820 Beverly Boulevard, and I'm coming to talk to you about the recent change in policy on collecting tree limbs, going from weekly to once a month. And I'd like to point out that we are a tree city, and as such, we have many mature trees and a good wind, branches come down, and having to wait a month kills your grass if you have to leave it on that. It's oftentimes too big for me to handle, and it can attract vermin. So I'd like to ask the council to reconsider that policy and go back to weekly collection for the good of the city.
Okay. Thank you. We have our urban forester here as well as our DPW director, so they have heard that, and it is something that we will certainly be taking a look at. We've gotten a number of comments on that, pros and cons, and it's something that we're going to take a look at at the end of the year and reevaluate if it is working or not. So thank you. Okay, I'm going to try it again. With that, we will close citizens' comments. Okay. We'll now move on to tonight's order of business. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approve the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, July 16, 2018. Warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1329. Ordinance 0818, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 138 zoning, Division 14, 11 Mile District of the Berkeley City Code ordinances regarding outdoors automobile sales. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Ordinance number 00918, matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, animals of the City of Berkeley Code of ordinances related to the keeping of chickens. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for 10 days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Resolution number R2618, matter of recognizing Jean Redpath Marnich on the occasion of her 100th birthday. And proclamation number P0518, matter of approving a proclamation declaring September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley.
Okay. There are a number of items on tonight's consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Any additions, corrections, changes? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has been approved. Now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's agenda?
Recognizations, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
All right. We have a couple. Up first for this very special resolution, I have asked Councilmember Stedman to read
This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Jean Redpath Marnich on the occasion of her 100th birthday. Whereas Jean Cameron Campbell was born on June 9, 1918, in Paisley, Scotland. By 1924, her parents moved the family to 2923 Thomas in Berkeley. Ms. Campbell is a Berkeley High School graduate, class of 1935. And whereas on July 1, 1944, Jean married Fred Redpath. Following their marriage, Jean and Fred had their sons Stuart and Ian. They are Berkeley High School alumnus, and Ian will celebrate his 50th high school reunion in August. After starting their family, the couple bought their home at 3188 Thomas, where Jean still resides today. This beautiful union lasted for 38 wonderful years until the passing of her beloved Fred in 1982. In 1987, Jean Redpath married a fellow Berkeley resident Marty Marnich, and whereas today, Jean still lives in that home on Thomas. Over the course of her life, in her professional career, she has been a very active member in the Berkeley community. Ms. Marnich was a charter member of Greenfield Presbyterian Church of Berkeley. Over the years, she has been a deacon and elder of the church. Ms. Marnich was highly involved in the Berkeley School District. She served as a PTA president and an active member of the Berkeley Boosters Club and a den mom while her sons were in the Cub Scouts. In the community, she was a worthy matron of the Berkeley Eastern Star, a member of the Michigan grand family of the Berkeley Eastern Star, and a leader of the Berkeley D-Mallay where she received the Hats Off Award. And whereas Jean Redpath Marnich has lived and tasted life throughout this period that has given her insight, experience, and wisdom of us can fully appreciate, today I join with Jean's family in wishing her a happy birthday. Now therefore, the City Council, Section 1, the City Council, on behalf of all local residents, offers its genuine pleasure to extend special greetings to Jean Redpath Marnich upon the occasion of her 100th birthday. We are grateful for this opportunity to join with the family and many friends of Jean as we honor an individual who truly understands the beauty of life and its challenges and triumphs. May the health and happiness of her years so richly merit, her years so richly merit be with her always, introduced and passed at a regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 13, 2018, signed by Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor. Congratulations and happy birthday.
You don't expect me to read this to you?
You've got the microphone. You can say whatever you want.
I have the microphone, but I haven't got the eyes.
Don't worry about readers. Say whatever you want to say.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Berkeley Council, and other dedicated people, and all of you people who are out here, particularly my dear son, who came all the way from Buffalo this afternoon just to be here with me. I have been blessed by the good Lord, and I'll tell you, if you want a good life, have good friends, a good family, and believe in a good Lord. It's worked for me, and at 100, I think I look pretty good. Actually, when three men stood up, I felt pretty good. Again, I want to thank every one of you, and I'm particularly proud at our new mayor. I hoped he was a good commissioner, and when it came time to vote, didn't make any difference who else ran. I voted for him and prayed that he'd win. And together, we're going to make Berkeley a great city again. I have lived in here since I was six years old, on the same street on Thomas. I did move. I got married, and we moved from the corner of Wiltshire across the street to the corner of Beverly. My kids wouldn't even talk about it on show and tell, because we moved with grab just old, old, old. Things that we found around the house, we carried them. We didn't have a big truck, I'm not going to tell anybody. But God bless me, I'm still here, and I intend to be here for a long time. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you all for coming. All right. Councilmember Gavin, you're up next to read proclamation, P0518.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation declaring September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, Michigan. Whereas 43 children in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer each day and at an average age of six years old, and whereas one out of five children diagnosed with cancer will not survive the disease, and whereas the types of cancers that affect children are most often very different from those that affect adults, and whereas childhood cancer is not just one disease but is made up of a dozen types and countless subtypes of cancer, and whereas childhood cancer spares no socioeconomic, ethnic, racial, or geographic class, and whereas pediatric cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in U.S. children under 15 years of age, and whereas the causes of most pediatric cancers are largely unknown and not strongly linked to lifestyle, unlike adult cancers, and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will develop long-lasting chronic conditions resulting from treatment, and whereas the childhood cancer rates have been rising for the past few decades, and approximately 15,780 children in the U.S. under the age of 15 will be diagnosed with cancer in 2018, and whereas cancer kills more kids than AIDS, asthma, cystic fibrosis, diabetes, and muscular dystrophy combined, and whereas in the last 25 years, only three drugs have been specifically developed for children's cancer, and whereas less than 5% of the federal government's total funding for cancer research is dedicated to childhood cancers, and only about 4% of funds raised for the National Cancer Institute go directly to pediatric cancer research, and whereas the funding for pediatric cancer research has gone down steadily since 2003, and whereas despite the facts, childhood cancer research is vastly and consistently underfunded, and whereas despite major advances in treatment, it is still critically important to conduct research and increase awareness regarding pediatric cancer. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, in order to help raise awareness of pediatric cancer and its victims, September 2018 is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley, Michigan. Proclaim this 13th day of August, 2018, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number two. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation about the potential Coolidge Road Diet.
Anna, can you dim the lights of the presentation shows?
Oh.
Probably not that much. So just a little background. If you've been around the DDA for the past year and a half, you know we've been looking at Coolidge just from an economic development standpoint. We saw we put two crosswalks in. Obviously, the road diet has been on our minds, but thinking back over the history, you know, ever since, I think, the first document I ran across is from 2001, when the DDA put out a newsletter that talked about the imminent road diet on Coolidge, and they actually had also talked to RCOC about a road diet on 12 Mile, which RCOC, Road Commission of Oakland County, had denied. So the DDA and the city in 2001 actually were moving forward on a road diet for Coolidge, and then somehow it seemed to have gotten sidetracked. And then again, in 2012, we know road diet came up, and HRC, Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, did, where'd Roland go? Ah ha. Did some studies for us and some scenarios. Traffic counts were a little bit higher then, and it seemed like maybe it just wasn't quite the right time, and here we are now in 2018. And the DDA had commissioned, I drive Coolidge every time I come in, because I drive out from Detroit, well, except for the occasional time when I take Woodward, just because I'm bored, but I take 696, and I get off at Coolidge, and I come up, and for the year and a half-plus that I've been here, I just, I've thought, you know what? We need to do something here. And in discussions with business owners and checking out the history and talking to Cheryl from Spalding de Decker, who is the DDA's traffic consultant, and HRC, Colleen and Roland from HRC, it seems like the timing is right, and it's right for a lot of reasons. It's right because it's a safe thing to do. It's right because it's going to facilitate traffic movement. It's right because it's the economic development driver that we need. I emailed Justin Tardy, who's the economic development guy in Ferndale, and I said, "Hey, Jordan." You know, they were, Ferndale was one of the first early adopters of a road diet on 9 Mile, and it continues to expand. And I said, "Jordan, you know, what kind of investment have you seen?" And he said, "You know, in the past two years, we've seen an intense level of investment on or near 9 Mile following our road diet, non-motorized investments. These include over 300 housing units and thousands of square feet of commercial space." And then he listed off a bunch. Ferndale House apartment building, 100 units, $14 million-plus investment. Antihero Restaurant, plus four new shops and restaurants under construction on West 9 Mile. 409 on 9, 127 units to be built, $16 million-plus investment that includes green space, residential park, bike parking, et cetera, auto supply, a new restaurant, Detroit Fleet, which is on East 9 Mile, which is a rather, you know, kind of abandoned side. I mean, it just goes on and on. And what Ferndale's seen, these road diets trigger, is not unusual. It's, road diets are a practice that MEDC supports, the redevelopment-ready communities, you know, is a big fan. When we, when I talked to Vince, what's Vince's last name?
Ranger.
Ranger from MEDC, he's the one who's in charge of the TAP grants, and he said, you know, we were talking, because originally, we were looking at road diet from 696 partnering with Huntington Woods Oak Park and, you know, Berkeley, and you'll see more about that later, but he said, you know, he says, "You need to connect it." He said, "Why aren't you looking at 696 South to 9 Mile? Because Oak Park is already expanding, 9 Mile from Ferndale, and the more we connect, the more it weighs when we go for TAP grant funds." So instead of going, so this is a part of a larger strategy to look at Coolidge as a corridor from 9 Mile to 12 Mile of partnering with our neighboring communities. We believe we're in the position to do the 11 to 12 Mile now, because our, to be frank, our business district needs it. But that's kind of lays the groundwork. I'm going to turn the kind of technical aspects of it over to Cheryl, and then we'll take questions when you guys are done.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Cheryl Gregory. I'm with Spalding de Decker Associates, and I evaluated some of the traffic engineering aspects of the road diet. I'm going to start off with the first 12 slides. No, I only have eight slides, actually, six slides. Start off with just a little bit about what a road diet is, because if you've seen these around the state, some of them look different than what's being proposed for Coolidge. What we're looking at for Coolidge is what we call a classic road diet, where you take four lanes and you turn it down to two through lanes and a center-left turn lane. Four, four-lane road sections, as you currently have, as many communities have, are no longer constructed. We know that the safety issues around a four-lane roadway are significant, and so it's considered an obsolete design. That said, I'll get more into the safety aspects of what the road diet is, but for this classic road diet, what we'll be doing is proposing to do is eliminate one-through lane in each direction. With that extra 22 to 24 feet of space, create the center-left turn lane, as well as a bike lane in each of the north and southbound directions. I won't belabor this. I think Vivian did a nice job of summarizing this. There is improved safety as a benefit of the road diet for Coolidge Highway, better non-motorized options, walkability, a livable environment. And that livability term is really the relationship between the location and quality of your transportation facilities and the opportunities for access to better jobs, affordable housing, safer streets, all of those promote the economic development. Better emergency response times. I have a separate slide. I'd like to talk a little bit more about that. Additional on-street parking. We expect to see 30-plus additional parking spaces within this one-mile stretch from 11 to 12 Mile road. And that's because when we eliminate the beginning and end of each signalized intersection, what you see right now is your five-lane section, and then as you depart an intersection or you come into an intersection, your road widens out or tapers down so that you make room for that center-left turn lane currently. And because of that, that taper area eliminates the possibility of parking. Once we get rid of the need to shift your lanes, your outside lanes, you'll open those spaces up for parking, potential parking. Encourages economic growth, we spoke to that, and better meets the needs of all users within a community, not simply vehicles. We want to make sure it's a complete street. More specifically, the roadway safety. We look at reducing the number of through lanes, tends to calm traffic. It will reduce weaving, specifically, like I said, at your intersections, where right now, you've got a lane widening and then a lane tapering down to make room for your current center-left turn lanes at signalized intersections. It also has the benefit of potentially reducing the distance in a crosswalk that your pedestrians need to cross at these intersections, potential to reduce left-turn conflicts as well. The two-way left-turn center lane, the nice part about that is it essentially will create more capacity in your through lanes, because right now, if a vehicle stops in a through lane to turn left, you're essentially down to a single lane in one direction anyways, while your queue is in your through lane, waiting for that left-turn movement to be completed. Center-left turn lane allows a vehicle to get out of the through lane, lets through traffic continue to pass by. Pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities. We'll still have bus stops outside of the through lane. Pedestrians, we talked about that, and the bicycle lane, a single dedicated lane, minimum of five feet for bike lanes. We're going to see, once we get some detailed measurements through the corridor, see if we can get a six-foot bike lane in there, but we know we can get a minimum of five-foot bike lane. Emergency response services. Statistically, what emergency responders have experienced is now that there would be a center-turn lane created, it's generally open, more so than when you have two lanes in each direction without an escape route, for lack of a better word. So they actually see a better response time when they have the center-through lane, that center-turn lane, as an alternative for passing vehicles in the through lanes. And as Vivian noted, creating a community that people drive to instead of drive through, that's what we're trying to do here with this road diet. Creates more on-street parking options, and it gives, as it calms traffic, it allows motorists to pay attention to what's around them, your parks, your businesses, your restaurants, and so forth. I know this is small. I'll tell you why I have this slide up here. The Transportation Improvement Association, TIA, for those of you who aren't familiar with TIA, it is an organization comprised of about 200 public agencies and many corporate leaders that have a leaders that have an interest in safety and improving safety in all of our transportation modes. They're a respected entity in southeast Michigan. You may have already been introduced to Jim Santilli or Patrick Colley. They actually did the analysis of the traffic for this road diet. And what they found, this is why I pulled out some of the quotes there, what they found is of the total 54 accidents that have occurred in this one-mile stretch alone, 42 of them have the potential to be mitigated with this road diet. So it means that these are the rear-end accidents and the side-swipe accidents. And those are the two that tend to be mitigated when you do a road diet. In general, they see 29% decrease in these types of accidents. I would expect in this stretch of Coolidge, because of the unique lane shifts you have at each signalized intersection, which is where most of your side-swipes occur, you'll probably see a greater reduction than just 29%. The second box, which is also very difficult to see, I know, talks about levels of service. The levels of service, there's not a single movement that degrades more than one rating, I guess. It's rated A through F. Nothing goes down more than one, one point. And we were very, TIA was very conservative when they did this. They assumed that there was still going to be background traffic growth, even though some COGS says in this area that there's not going to be significant background traffic growth. In fact, they say it's going to decrease. TIA decided to take a more conservative approach when they did the analysis and said, well, let's assume it's going to grow. It's going to grow at least 1%. So they backed that into their analysis. So the numbers that used, that were represented by their study are quite conservative, which gives a little wiggle room, if you will, when you look at the levels of service expected. If you weren't aware, there's been public outreach and stakeholder involvement earlier this summer. Two public information meetings were conducted July 25th here in the city, one in the afternoon, noon time, and then one after work, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We had data and consultation with TIA and first responders prior to those meetings. We had over 40 attendees and we had written comments submitted by 37 individuals. 76 were very positive, 19 were unsure, and 5% said, no way. All of the information that was made public at that stakeholder meeting, at the public outreach meetings are available at that website, the downtownberkeley.com, Coolidge Highway Lastly, this is a photo match image of what the road diet will look like from an aerial view. This is at Ketalpa. So there will be a single northbound lane, a single southbound lane, a continuous center-left turn lane. The green highlighted areas where the bike path is, that's traditionally where the marking is to designate potential conflicts with vehicles. You may have noticed that in Ferndale or Royal Oak. So it raises a motorist awareness where there's a traffic shift moving into a right-turn lane and so forth. And there's two other images online at the downtown Berkeley website that can be viewed as well. And that's all I had. It was a quick overview. I hope it was beneficial and certainly if there's any questions. Glad to hear.
Okay. Again, this is a presentation, so we are not voting on anything today. I want to make sure that that is clear to everybody here and everybody watching. But this is an important step. As Vivian mentioned at the beginning, this is something we've been talking about for a very long time in the city of Berkeley. It has come and gone for various reasons and right now it's back again. And I'm going to open it up to questions right now from council and then we will talk about potential next steps at the end of this. This is certainly something that, aside from our input and questions and aside from the input sessions that we've had, we still want to hear additionally from residents and kind of get some feedback and make sure, again, that everyone's aware of why we're studying this and why we're talking about this right now. All right, council. Who's up first? Councilmember Henin.
Right. Do road diets like this, will they reduce the noise for pedestrians? I know when I'm taking walks, I avoid Coolidge simply because I can't have a conversation with my wife while walking there.
You know what? I'll let Cheryl answer too, but I just came, I was at a marketing and promotions committee meeting, sitting out on the deck at Republica. And it started at 5:30 and I left at 6:35 to get over here. And the noise level is high. But as we sat there and I literally counted the number of cars honking, screeching, barely getting around as somebody's trying to turn left and somebody else is speeding through. My own, and I'm sure I'm giving you life experience data and Cheryl can give you solid data, there's no way that sound doesn't decrease when you slow traffic and you don't have cars honking and screeching into each other. I mean, it has to calm traffic and when traffic calms, it becomes quieter. That's what calm does. But that's just my experience every time I sit on Coolidge at Republica, so.
Part of the TIA report included calculating the travel time from the beginning of the corridor at 696 up north to 12-mile road. And the before and after travel times result in about a five mile per hour decrease in speed. So we know that that will cause the traffic, that causes the traffic calming and there is a lower decibel level at slower speed. I would agree that the potential side-swipes and a lot of near misses that occur where you've got your lane weave going in and out at traffic signals and you have to weave back in towards the meat, towards the center line to make room for your on-street parking, that movement will be eliminated. So I would hope that there's fewer close calls with side-swipes in those areas.
And I will say those, that weave is one of the things I'm really looking forward to. The first time I came through Berkeley, what, what is this? This is crazy. Then traffic signalization. Will there be any, how will we make sure we get the signals right to make sure that things are moving, you know, once we change the patterns of the traffic?
That will need to be looked at. When TIA, again, when they looked at modeling the optimum situation, optimum condition, they assumed that the traffic signals would be what we call optimized. And so they would look at timing, basically signal timing, we all, we all understand that. Basically, it's to make sure that the signals are timed and it's to make sure that the progression can be made the most efficient at a 30 or 35 miles an hour, sorry, 30 or 35 mile an hour speed. But also that you create gaps. It's called platooning. So that will have to be looked at as well in the, in the future. Perhaps the whole corridor could be modernized. I don't need, don't know that you need to do that right away, but that will be something to consider in the future.
What do you mean by modernized?
There's, I think you have a box span signal configuration already at 12 Mile and Coolidge. The box span signal configuration is safer, has, offers better visibility to the signals. Many of the intersections south of 12 Mile, I believe, are still on diagonal spans. So modernizing the configuration will help improve safety. And if you increase, if you improve the technology in your controllers, there's an ability to time them more tightly for the interconnect, interconnectivity.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman.
The one concern that I had was the right-hand turn. And I saw that you marked that with a, with a long green strip, that it was a danger area for the bicycles in the, but would the cars be turning right in front of the bicycle lane then, when they got up to a, the corner, let's say of Ketalpa and Coolidge?
The green area is to indicate that there's a conflict point. That's where a vehicle will merge into the right lane and it's going to cross over, it's where the vehicle does have to cross over the bike lane. The bike lane will be striped to stay to the left of the right turn lane, if that makes any sense. It won't be up against the curb. It will, it will remain close next to the through lane.
Okay, so there'll be an additional right turn lane?
Yes. The dedicated right turn lane remains.
Okay. And then the bike lane and then a, then a right turn lane. Okay, I get it.
The bike lane in the right turn lane will be shared. That right turn lane will be shared. It'll be extra wide, but it will be shared.
But it'll be a little wider?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Two of the things that we've looked at in the past that have been going against this are the number of curb cuts that we have in the area, which I think is 36. And people have said, traffic engineers have said that's, that's too many because there's too much turning there. And the other one is the traffic volume, which they've said over 16,000 is not recommended. What are your comments on that?
There are different, different approaches depending on the average daily traffic in the corridor. Less than 10,000, it doesn't even get studied because they know it'll work. Between 10 to 15,000 or 10 to 20,000, it requires analysis. It's, it's not always a sure thing, which is why the TIA conducted their analysis because they needed to look at things like the signal spacing, how wide the lanes are, the prevalence of on-street parking, those sorts of things. It could have turned out that it didn't work, but based on the analysis and the traffic modeling, it shows that it does with a pretty high level of confidence.
And curb cuts were factored into there at all?
They are. Side friction, to some extent are. I understand that the city's master plan will be looked at in the next several months. I assume that there will be an access management component to that. It's always best, especially at the DDA area, if there's an opportunity to eliminate curb cuts or to make them one-way, one-way in, one-way out, it's always beneficial.
Well, and just to speak to that, you know, as we start our downtown planning process, one of the things that we specifically want to look at is curb cuts. And the nice thing about particularly on Coolidge in our retail district is the fact that we can eliminate curb cuts because we have alleyway access. So those are things that we will be reviewing with the, you know, planners and I, I think that you'll see a lot of that curb cut, which needs to be addressed, addressed in a thoughtful way. But we're fortunate because we do have access. I think Kristin Kapalinski has spoken about in Rochester Hills, where she's the planner, that they've reduced almost majority of their curb cuts because they're in the same, kind of, they have the same opportunity we have with the alleys behind, where now if you want to come and you want to park at those businesses, you go down the alleyways instead of having all the curb cuts. And that also gives us the opportunity to do more to enhance some of those side parking lots and things, and things like that. So that's all part of our long-term strategy. You know, I, the MED, I mentioned TAP grants and I mentioned this multi-community planning grant. And, you know, the long-term goal is to do a major streetscape on Coolidge, you know, and not just 11, you know, from 11 to 12, but, but in that process then to incorporate, you know, the ideas that this planning process brings forward. And then because we are working at it from a multi-community standpoint, we can go for larger TAP grant dollars. You know, we're trying to include in this multi-community planning process, which I know goes a little ways from this, but the whole sustainable infrastructure portion. So we believe that long-term, this road diet, tying it into the three communities at large and really being thoughtful with our planning process is going to transform Coolidge, not for the, just for the business district, but from a safety standpoint, from a citizen standpoint, and from a sustainability standpoint, so.
My only other concern is the development at Beaumont. And I've requested Beaumont's traffic study and have not received it yet. I don't know if anybody else has seen it yet, but it's supposedly not complete yet.
Pat actually looked at that whole thing and that was a part of his traffic analysis and he didn't feel like it was going to impact.
I didn't see him say that in there.
I don't know that he specifically said it, but he brought that data in. There's a lot of data he didn't specifically say I included this, but when he was doing the forecasting, which he talks about the forecasting and all of that, he did look at Beaumont. I specifically asked him to.
Vivian, you've mentioned a number of potential grants. What is the cost that the city is looking at for, for this?
Well, the DDA actually is looking to pick up the cost and right now we're, yeah. So the cost, we just got a, an estimate from HRC that comes in at about 118?
116.
116? So currently, the DDA is looking at picking up the cost. There is some, I've heard, you know, there might be an opportunity for the city to also invest. I think that we need to, you know, kind of look at that. At 108, I think it's, it's dollars well spent. We have money that's basically in the budgeted, budget that's been already targeted towards complete streets and things like this, that we can probably find the majority of the funds. I'm hoping to get a little bit of grant money from, you know, one or two sources that might pick up things specific like to the bike lanes, which might cost, say, 25,000 or something like that.
Additional questions? I do want to note that we had the street chalk art fest a few weeks ago and there were just so many folks who were, because it was the first time, we mentioned that we shut down Coolidge, that were walking up and down, didn't even know half of the stores that were there. And a large part of that is because people drive through, not to, as we heard before, they use Coolidge as a quick thoroughfare and are often challenging our officers to find them as they're traveling at speeds higher than 35 typically. And they don't, they're not looking at the businesses that are there. And a number of our, our businesses had such great days and had made so many, had so many new clients or customers who were like, I didn't know this was here. This place is great. It's a gem. I'm going to come here now as a destination. But they didn't even know it was there before because Coolidge just for whatever reason has turned into a thoroughfare for most folks. And maybe that's because they get off 696 and they fly on down. But it's something that we do need to certainly look at and that's why we're having this conversation today, this presentation. And we will continue to figure out what the next steps are going to be as we continue to study what's going, the best for Coolidge and for the city.
Yeah. And just, you know, as far as public input, we did have, you know, we had the two sessions that Cheryl mentioned. And then we also left online public input open for an additional two weeks. So, you know, we, we, through the DDA, we actually boosted the post about the public input session. So it reached a lot of people. And I mean, we're pretty pleased with the amount of input that we've gotten, both online as well as in person, so.
I know the business owners are certainly very supportive. The Coolidge business owners, at least.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, it's, it's a tough economy and the more we can do to support what they're doing and help them survive, the more it makes the city of Berkeley a healthier place and a, a place that's attractive for residents to move to.
Yeah. And let me clarify. Many business owners, I'm not going to say I've spoken to every single one and they agree with this, but many, before I get phone calls and emails, I did, all right, many.
Not all of them, the majority, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you both. Anybody here that would like to comment before we move on? Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Manager.
I simply wanted to note, just to contrast, city of Berkeley's downtown area with some of the other ones that have seen many, many orange barrels over the course of the summer. This is a project that can be accomplished without orange barrels. This can be done. You won't see the massive reconstruction you've seen in other downtowns. This would be accomplished through restriping. So it's, it's a great near-term project before, you know, we see some of the same problems that others have struggled with.
Yes, no, I agree. That's a good point. I had it written down here, but didn't bring it up. So thank you.
My apologies.
Thank you. No, no.
Are you open for comments? About the diet or no?
I asked for it. You didn't come up. We've got, you know, yeah, come on, come on, Chuck, come on, come on.
When was the TIA study done? What time of year? Was school in session?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. It was done from February through March.
Okay.
February through March, for those of you who are at home.
Of?
This year.
This year, okay.
2018.
2018. The stuff you talked about, the Ferndale economic development, how are you sure that that was causative and not coincidental?
Jordan says, if anybody, or just, Jordan says, if anybody has questions, give them a call. It's Jordan Twardy, he's the economic development guy in Ferndale and he'll be happy to give you all the details about.
But did he, did he say how he knows that it was causative and not just coincidental?
I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you. No, it's not because I'm disagreeing necessarily. There, there's no way we're going to be able to say it was or it wasn't. So I want to, I want to leave the other communities out and focus on us. I agree.
But it was presented as, as fact? It was presented as, as fact?
I don't disagree.
Speculation.
I don't disagree. Thank you. All right. With that, let's move on to item number three. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-5818 out of approving participation in the Thai Michigan teal campaign to promote awareness of ovarian cancer and its symptoms.
Is there a motion to approve M-5818?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner.
Lieutenant Mayor, this has become an annual tradition in the city of Berkeley. Thai Michigan teal, which is sponsored by the Michigan Ovarian Cancer Alliance, will tie teal ribbons around the light poles and some signs on Twelve Mile and Coolidge. And this is an effort to raise awareness, as Madam Clerk said, for ovarian cancer. September is National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, and so Thai Michigan teal will like to keep them up through the entire month of September. Again, they, they're trying to raise awareness of ovarian cancer and try to urge more people to get screenings for this item and be aware of the general symptoms of this. Unfortunately, it's one of the deadliest cancers amongst women with an average five-year survival rate of only forty-five percent. So anything that we can do to raise awareness, Thai Michigan teal is trying to take that effort upon themselves. So we'd like to participate.
As the city manager mentioned, you know, this is the third, I believe, third iteration of this campaign, and part of that is because it keeps getting bigger and growing. And raising awareness is something we talked about earlier from Councilmember Gavin's proclamation. Awareness, anything that we can do to help raise awareness for the treatment of cancer or research, makes sense to me to certainly be a part of that. Any other questions?
Just a comment, Your Honor. They've been very good about putting the things up in a timely manner and taking them down in a timely manner. So it's a very responsible organization, and they've shown that in the past, so.
Is anybody here from the organization, by chance? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Seeing no additional comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-5818?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Enter Brad.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1018 out of considering the first reading of an ordinance in Chapter 130, vegetation, Article 2, trees, bushes, and shrubs, Section 130-31 to Section 130-44 of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-1018?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Henan.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Gavin. Okay, we have come a long way. Mr. Baumgartner, want to give us a quick review of how we got to this point?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. As you know, the Tree Board has been hard at work crafting a new ordinance that expands upon the protection of the city's urban forests and puts in place not only protections, but a way to track how our urban forest is developing over time. Also, as the ordinance includes a way of funding the expansion of our urban forests, or at least sustaining it, in a matter that creates a tree fund so that we can replace trees as they come off of both private and public properties. We've been through two work sessions. I continue to applaud the work of the Tree Board. I've attended several of the meetings. Councilmember Henan is the liaison for that board together. I think everyone has worked really well, not only with staff, but the city's arborist as well. So this brings, in front of you today for city council's first reading, is the fruits of that labor. And we have members of the Tree Board as well that can answer any questions about it, specifically Judd Hart from JH Hart Urban Forestry and Derek Schuler are also available. So we have the team assembled to answer any questions that may come up.
Okay, as we look at this, first off, members of the Tree Board, anything we want to add before we, we happy? A lot of hard work, a lot of time, a lot of effort, hoping to get this thing moving. Okay, thank you. With, with that, let's open it up to council. Questions, comments, issues as we discuss this? Councilmember Blanchard.
Okay, I've got a number of questions, and most of them are just policy questions. In Section 13033A, it says the city manager designated shall have the power and the control over all trees non-existing or which may be planted within the boundaries of the city. The question I've got is, the way that's worded, you'd almost think that you have to get permission from the city manager to provide, plant a tree on private property.
That is not the intent of this.
I know that's not the intent.
This is really focused more, the text of the ordinance focuses more on the removal of trees instead of the planting of.
Would this require the approval of the city manager to remove trees on private property?
There are portions where that needs to be approved by either myself or a designee, but the bulk of the focus here is public trees. There are situations where anything that requires a site plan, whether it's administrative or through the Planning Commission itself, there is a, there's a tree management and protection plan that's in place. If for some reason a tree is unable to be protected on private property in the course of a permitted either construction or demolition, then funds will be paid into the tree fund and that tree would then essentially be replaced somewhere in the city, likely on public land if it can't be replaced on the private land.
Okay. The, on 13037, which is site plans, there's two paragraphs there. When the development of any property requiring a site plan, approval occurs to go through that process. And it looks like there's, there's two separate processes, one for private property and one for public property. And I'm wondering if, if that was the way it was intended. One requires the planning commission to take action and one requires the city manager to take action. And they're both site plans.
Right, we do have, that's strictly a reference to, as you know, there's administrative site plan review and site plans that have to go in front of the Planning Commission body. We made to make sure that there were, there's a process in place for either since...
It just appeared to be a little confusing as to how it goes and maybe, there might be some wording. I haven't had a chance to look at and develop any different wording, but it looks like it might have been able to be cleaned up a little bit.
That's where we're headed.
I can address that. A is the existing language that is in our ordinance. It made the change removing the comprehensive tree management plan because we do not have a comprehensive tree management plan. So just make the ordinance reflect the reality. And B is the direction we want to go. Our attorney, Mr. Steren, did have, you know, concerns with this section until we made these, this cleanup here. So, but I do think there's probably some intention and room to clean up A, but it was left as the existing language.
Well, maybe we'll take a little more look at it. 13038 contractors, we say in here that we're going to make people haul, get rid of all the limbs, trunks, branches, and stuff. But DTE comes through, knocks all this stuff down and leaves it. And we can't enforce that, and that's been in there. This has been in there for years, but we can't enforce it. So what are we going to do? Going to put out another tree ordinance that says the same thing, it's not going to accomplish the mission of getting DTE to clean up the mess?
And I can tell you, the conversation surrounding that was very robust at the last meeting and meetings previous because we all acknowledged it to be a persistent issue. Judd Hart from JH Hart Urban Forestry can address that, and he provided several, a lot of guidance on this topic.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Blanchard, I want to have a point of clarification for you. When, when DTE and their contractors come into the city to trim our private trees in our backyard in a normal process of line clearance without a storm, they clean up their own stuff, okay? When you call them and ask them to take a tree away from the power lines so you or your contractor can take away, take the rest of the tree down, because a normal tree service contractor cannot work around ten feet around electrical conductors. So Edison's feeling is, okay, so your private tree grew up in our easement, we're going to go ahead and clear it safely for you, but we're not going to clean it up. So there's two things going on there. If it's during a storm or conventional line clearance, you know, pole-to-pole line clearance in, you know, on a nice summer day, there's two things going on there, and I just hope that you're not getting those confused.
This, the one tree I'm thinking of was blown over in a storm.
There you go.
And DTE came along and trimmed up so they could, the lines weren't touching, and just left all the stuff there.
And their feelings are that your private tree grew up into our easement, and we're going to go ahead and make it safe, but you've got to clean the mess up. And I think it stinks, too. I do, but...
We can't, we can't get any better now with this. I mean, I was looking, maybe we can make this better and get...
You aren't going to change their policies. They're going to change ours.
Neither. We can't beat us.
That particular item, it is, the oversight comes from the Public Service, or the MPSC, the Public Service Commission. So that, we would continue to refer our displeasure with that to that body so that can be, eventually go to DTE.
Let's see, I'm trying to find the next one here. And this may be one for Mr. Hart also. On, what is it? Section 13043, where we're talking about when trees can be trimmed, in that section we have specific dates, but none of the other sections, all the dates have been removed. And that, that's the one that says, and I just wonder if that was an oversight or that's left in there on purpose.
In these specific ordinances, and I said it to the Tree Board so many times, it's, it's good to be vague. It's good to be vague and not be concrete. And where this actually came from is my philosophy within my company. Are we all familiar with oak wilt? Does everybody kind of have a good understanding that it's prevalent in the area? And it's very important that you don't trim your trees during the heat of the summer. And where that verbiage actually came from, they picked April...
I'm having a brain. April first, it may be...
June, middle of June. I apologize for not having my notes in front of me, but my philosophy within my company is if an oak tree has leaves on it, we don't touch it until it's dormant. So that's the reason that that specific thing got vague.
Well, this, the one still has the dates in it, the rest of, the rest of the paragraphs don't have the dates in them. I was concerned about that, whether that was an oversight or something, so.
And he's referring to Section E, and it does look like we did overlook A, you know, now that I see it. We do have specific dates listed. Responsibility for, in right-of-way situations, responsibility reside with the Road Commission for County City. Relevant utility company shall perform all pruning or trimming between October sixteenth and March thirty-first.
Thank you.
So it seems like we, I think that was an oversight.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Blanchard, in these specific things, in my experience, is vague is good.
I agree with you.
Okay. Just want to make sure, and that's not, that's not the way we like to govern, but vague is a good thing in this specific type of an ordinance.
In, in sub-paragraph G of that, that same paragraph, the city manager designated shall have the authority to enter upon private premises, you know, and as allowed by, by state, as permitted by state and federal law. What state and federal law permits us to enter private residences?
In some situations, it's the Constitution itself. There are limits to how, where a public official can enter when an item is out of public view. That was suggested language that came from actually John Steren's office. So it would be, there's, there's a situation that could arise where an individual would be receiving enforcement action, and so we are limited in our ability to assess enforcement actions to trees that aren't within the public view or that we can't readily access without taking extraordinary measures.
Mr. Mayor.
Is that accurate? Madam Attorney, we got on that?
That is correct.
Mr. Hart.
It's also important that you understand that we have to protect our right-of-ways and our streets and sidewalks. So if we had, and I think code enforcement would be the designee, Matthew, if I may say for you, code enforcement might be the designee for this specific thing where we actually go on the city property and a tree that would be hazardous to our right-of-way would be another example.
Almost done, two more. 13044B talks about a tree protection plan, and again, referenced International Society of Arboriculture, and that's to be used as our guideline. Is that, is that something, going to be something we're going to have to have at City Hall then? A document that we're going to have to maintain here?
Yes, sir. We, we discussed two different options, both a hard copy and a referenced online copy that people could access through the city's website as well. But yes, there is a number of items contained within the ordinance here that need to be made available to the public. Some of them are actually existing items that should already be able to be readily produced, whether it's at City Hall or DPW. And so we have some notes on how we say, whether we put together a binder that can be just easily handed over to somebody. Our preference, of course, we also to push these items online so that somebody isn't hemmed in by the hours of availability of the city personnel.
Okay, and the last one I've got is the same paragraph, Section B6, and that's calculating the value of trees. I know in the previous version of this, we had a reference to two documents that I couldn't find, and now we have no reference to any documents. So how do, how do we, so how do we calculate the value of a tree?
Actually, that was some of the work that was done by the, the Tree Board that preceded my involvement, but I do know that there is a, I think, what is it, chapter, page twenty-two here makes reference to a formula based on the, like, the width of the tree or the caliber of the tree. And that's, so, if anybody from the Tree Board or either...
That's for, that's for replacement trees.
Yeah. So I would, again, defer to our contractor.
We're going to say that you have, you know, there's a value to a tree, we've got to have a reasonable way that the public can understand that.
It's important to be vague. We have two mechanisms to actually do that. One's the Michigan Nursery and Landscape Association's guideline, which I, I probably would be involved in this process. And the Michigan Forestry and Parks Association has a tree valuation document that is somewhat dated, but we, you all, with me being here, have that structure available to you, and I'll make you proud on that.
So we'd have, we'd have to use you as a, as a staff arborist.
Which would be inappropriate.
Right, and we consult annually as we look at either our fee schedule or the, the work of the Tree Board comes back around to reassess some of the work it does in here. It would be appropriate to reevaluate those charges and make sure they keep in line with, you know, market-ready for trees and, you know, value of the dollar. So that's an annual item that can be approved by the Tree Board, the city manager, or a designee, or brought to city council.
I think it's much better than it has been. Great improvement, so congratulate the Tree Board for the hard work, and just, that's some questions, so thank you.
Additional comments, questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Dean.
I know you, the vague seems to be the word of the day, but I really like a little bit of structure. And I believe it's 130 to 138, page 11, if you're looking at the documents in front of you. The wording, I'm going to read the part in red, within a timely manner, you know, getting rid of debris, branches, limbs. I just would love to know what a timely manner is. I mean, I just don't, you know...
Sure.
Well, we actually had a specific, I think it was fourteen days.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours. And then the, okay, she's gone. The brush route came up. And we felt as though to have that, that, that specific of a time in there, and then we're waiting a month to get our brush picked up for the other residents was a little bit contradictory to the long-term goal. So that was when I said once again, it's good to be vague.
Yes, I, I see the whole picture now.
Yes, so as we've discussed and kind of building on the, the original public comment, as we reevaluate, you know, the brush pickup schedule, we, what we'd be looking for from an enforcement standpoint would be an indication that it is prepared for the next pickup that's available. And so it's not just sitting in the yard, strewn out everywhere, causing a possible issue with, with Roden Harbor Ridge or, or in violation of this. So in a timely manner would be likely the thing that would depend on most would be the next regular city pickup of brush or chipping.
Okay, thank you.
And it's important for you to know, too, that if that individual homeowner hires a contractor, that the brush pickup is not designed for contractors to utilize, it's for our residents.
Correct. Thank you, yes.
Just a point of clarification.
Yes, no, I appreciate that, thank you. And then I just have a general question on how are, I guess, how are we made aware of trees that might be diseased or a limb, like, other than people seeing it? But if it's on private property, is it up to the homeowner or how, I guess, how are these being reported?
The, our normal means right now is depending upon neighbors, the city staff, the certified arborist, or, you know, people self-reporting. So we have a, we, our feedback is to try to get it from basically anywhere that it would come from.
Okay.
Like I say, especially those areas that might be shielded from public view, then we define that from the sidewalk or the road.
Okay.
So a neighbor has a concern about something like that, they could report it, we'd be able to follow up with the homeowner, the homeowner themselves on, on potential remedies We'd be able to follow up with the homeowner, the homeowner themselves on potential remedies and issues.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Excuse me. My question centers around the section 13033, the removal portion. This was something that I'd brought up at the last meeting as well, trying to get that timeline of tree removal. I know that on, at least a portion of the, in a portion of this, there was, I think, a 30-day window for an individual to have to have a tree removed if it is on private property. I'd still like to kind of get that, the timeline for a tree removal from the very point that it has been identified as hazardous to when that tree is removed, to potentially allow that level of residents' voices to get involved through the tree advisory board to make some sort of recommendation on removal. It doesn't have to be a, you know, it is not decided by the tree advisory board, but just recommending, you know, that this is something, yes, that looks like it should be removed with the ultimate authority resting with the city manager or the city manager's designate. So that's something that, you know, whether, if we're using the semi-vague language, after, you know, considering a timely recommendation from the tree advisory board. And that may be something that the tree advisory board is not looking at getting their hands on, and that's okay. But this is just a way to kind of add a level of voices for residents, especially after hearing a lot of feedback on worrying about removal from trees of public property.
Well, you know, I think a little bit of this is going to be a code enforcement issue. And I'm not, I'm afraid I can't speak for them. One of the concerns that we had also was not only the code enforcement issue, it was the hardship, financial hardship.
Okay.
So, okay, you've got to take your tree down, and you've got 30 days to take it down, and we're on a limited income. In fact, we talked about in Birmingham, they have a program called BASK, and it's a program that they go ahead and they pay the contractor to take the tree down, and then they put a lien on their house and they, when they pass away or move on, when the house gets sold, BASK gets paid back. And I thought it was just a concept more than anything, but, you know, I think we have to be considerate of our residents relative to the hardship that this could cause.
Certainly, but isn't that a portion of this already, unless I misread? There's a portion that said if you, if you have a tree on public, or, excuse me, private property that has been identified as being hazardous, has to then be removed, and that it's at the cost of the resident themselves. I'm talking more about on the, on public land, public property, the actual overseeing, not overseeing, it's not even an oversight mechanism. It's more of just a way to have a tree that has been proposed to be removed or suggested, or looking at that that's the best way, the remedy for it, to have some sort of citizen voice on that as a recommendation to then the manager or the designate.
So this is on public land, and it's been deemed a hazard.
Yes.
Well, we would take it down the next day. That's, that's just.
That's the timeline of it?
Oh, yeah.
The active timeline?
We do not want any, anybody in harm's way. Now, may I also remind you that 70% of our row trees are silver maples? And we all know what's going on there.
Yep.
So anytime that I, something rolls across my desk that it's a hazard to our right-of-way sidewalk or street, we stop what we're doing and we go over and do that right now.
Okay.
And I'm telling you, that's, that's, might not be in there, but that's the way I do things.
Well, that was, that was part of my question. I was wondering about the timeline of it, because I really, I wasn't sure.
I just took the long way.
That's all right. As long as we get there, right?
Our removals are premised on diseased or dying trees. So in order to mitigate any potential hazards, that's why we get on it so fast.
Okay.
In that situation, when we're taking a tree, we do any corrective measures we can based on the advice of our arborists to try to prevent removal.
Okay.
But when it is deemed to be at that point, it does need to come down. So there's not a, as, there's not really a appeals process to say, keep my, you know, this tree is going down.
And the reason that I brought up the 30 days of the frame of reference is because that was a point in this proposed ordinance. And so that's why I was wondering if that was the normal process that we took with public trees as well.
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. We've done well. My question, my concern actually is not the ordinance ordinance. I'm good with everything that's been talked about today. I think we're good moving this forward, at least in my opinion, based on what I've heard. Question that I have is actually probably more of a overarching policy decision for the council and the city to decide. And we have chief here, and we have our attorney here. And we've, we've heard from a few residents that are concerned. The enforcement of this article, okay, this is not a civil infraction, it's a misdemeanor. And in terms of how we operate in the city right now, that is typical of how we operate, whether it's code. The only civil infractions we have, if I'm not mistaken, are for traffic fines. Am I correctly correct?
I think so, that's the case.
Yes.
So it was brought to my attention by a few folks who've seen this. Do we want this to be a misdemeanor? Do we want this to be a civil infraction? And whether if it's this, then it's going to apply to other things in the city as well that we would have to, I would assume, talk about and decide if we want to change those to civil infractions as well. And my, you know, looking around and talking to other folks, it seems that some do it our way and some do it the other way. Madam Attorney, I don't know if you have any input on what some of our neighbors do. And not that it necessarily matters what our neighbors are doing, but if we're the only ones that are operating under this, I feel like that would be something I'd like to know.
If it is a municipal civil infraction, if you decriminalize it and make it a civil infraction, it's punishable by a fine.
Right.
No jail. With regards to that, you can, you know, get an order from, if code enforcement writes a citation, it would then go to court. You would have to get an order allowing the building department, as well as probably an officer, to go onto the private property to look at the tree if you couldn't see it from a vantage point, a public vantage point, you know, the sidewalks or the road. You could get that order whether it was a misdemeanor or a civil infraction. So it's really, you know, how council wants to proceed. But that remedy would be possible with both.
Councilmembers, input, questions on this?
I have a question. So if you could just summarize the difference between a misdemeanor and a civil infraction, just. So a civil infraction is only punishable by a fine. Misdemeanors are punishable by, it's basically an and/or, and unless you designate, it would be $500 and/or 90 days. I mean, that would be, that's what it is generally, unless it's specifically provided by statute. For instance, drunk driving, that's a 93-day misdemeanor as opposed to a 90. So all misdemeanors carry with it the possibility of a fine and jail, which would then also, you could go on probation. You know, you could, I mean, there are a number of things that, you know, can occur if it's a misdemeanor. Whereas basically you pay your fine with a civil infraction. And are both of those, do they result in something being on your record, if you will? So.
It's like detention.
Yeah, your permanent record. No, no, because a civil infraction, it's not reportable except on traffic matters for point systems. Okay. So, so no, there's no, it's called a CCH or, you would not get a criminal history.
But there is for a misdemeanor.
Correct.
Okay. All right, I don't want to necessarily get into this now because we have a number of things that we want to, and I don't want to slow down the tree process or the tree ordinance process from moving forward. But I do think that as a council, we're going to have to decide how we want to enforce those types of issues. Do we want those to be misdemeanors, or do we want them to be civil infractions? And I don't know that we've had that conversation recently, and this has brought that to light, and it's something that we're going to have to get on the same page and get input from the chief, from the attorneys, and see what is the best way to enforce. Ultimately, it comes down to enforcement. We don't want to be excessively punitive. I don't need to throw somebody in jail because they had a sick tree and they didn't take care. But I don't think that that's the right way to handle it. But I understand there needs to be teeth, and there's pros and cons, so we are going to address that. As far as today. I'm ready to move this forward. Is there any? Anybody have any?
Hold wait.
Oh, we do.
I have one amendment on the issue that Councilmember Blanchard found. 13043E.
Right, taking it out.
Strike between October 16th and March 31st, and change it to, so it'd be, shall perform all pruning and trimming while the tree is dormant.
Anybody have any problems with the friendly amendment to this? No? It's something that we discussed, and that's why we do a first reading, so it makes sense. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on O1018?
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M5918, matter of awarding the rock salt bid to Detroit Salt Company as administered by the City of Farmington Hills and the Mitten Cooperative Bid Program.
Is there a motion to approve M5918?
Motion approved.
Support.
Approved by Councilmember Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgartner, it appears we have reached the Derek Schuler portion of our reading.
We have, Mr. Mayor. Just before we turn the show over to Ms. Schuler, just a couple of notes on process. As you will recall, City of Berkeley is a part of a purchasing cooperative, which helps us get better prices on our tonnage. This is administered, as mentioned in the motion, through City of Farmington Hills. We have a longstanding and very fruitful relationship with them. I know it's 90 degrees outside, but it is actually the best time to be discussing rock salt. Every other year we go through this, this is kind of unique, to be back here after a year. But I know Derek is going to mention the process there. But City of Berkeley is slated to purchase about 1400 tons of salts on a one-year contract with the possibility of a one-year extension. This is how we stand, we obviously use the salts to stand above our neighbors as far as clearing the streets, clearing the roads. Kudos to that, goes to Derek and his team, so Derek.
Thank you. As Matt alluded to, typically, we do this every couple of years. But last year, we had a unique situation where the low bid contractor for rock salt backed out of their bid after one complete year, which they had a right to do with proper notice through Farmington Hills in the bid process. So unique situation indeed where somebody just backs away. It certainly doesn't bode well for them for the future. They were not one of the bidders this time. But, you know, that's not something that you hope to see, for sure. So we were fearful that going back out to bid, that pricing would come in higher with this next bid. But luckily, that wasn't the case, and prices were approximately 10% cheaper. And we are recommending going back with Detroit Salt Company, who we've worked with in the past as well. So this was a, I guess, a win-win. Again, we'll reevaluate things after the first year, but pricing did come down for rock salt. So I'm happy to answer any questions. This has been a very beneficial cooperative bid. Very thankful to the City of Farmington Hills for administering this and putting in a lot of time of effort for all of the communities to take advantage of it. It is, I'm certainly grateful for that, and we've been very satisfied. Again, one of the unique functions of this bid is it gives us the ability to buy more and less than the 1,400 tons. So we can, we can buy 30% more at the same unit price, or 30% less at the same unit price, which you don't typically see in bidding. So that's the unique flexibility of this bid, is it gives us the ability to ride that a little bit, depending on winter conditions. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Public Works Director? Councilmember Stedman.
Just one, why did the other company back out after one year?
They did not disclose that reason specifically. So they just put something in writing, said that they no longer wish to move forward with the cooperative. So I don't know why. My speculation is, is that they may have received better contracts through maybe another vendor or large group and just decided to back away, but I don't know the reason why specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Henan?
And this pricing is for this season, and then the next season, there'll be different pricing, where we can optionally step out at that time.
That's correct. Both sides have that ability. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M5918?
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M6018, matter of approving the purchase of a 2017 rear loader truck at a total cost of $162,500 from Bell Equipment Company of Lake Orion, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M6018?
Motion to approve.
By Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
It's Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick items before turning it over to Derek again. This is a budgeted item. It is, you can find it in the city's budget. It's part of our planned process of changing out our equipment to make sure we can best serve the city. This is specific benefit is for our leaf season. It's one of three trucks that supports the leaf season. And again, bitted through Mitten, still is actually under its original powertrain warranty, which is a benefit. And then your packet includes both the bid and the basis of award, as well as the memo from Mr. Schuler.
Thank you, Matt. And we've been talking about this for a few years, as many of you know, purchasing a used rear loader. Basically trying to get the benefits of a newer truck, but not pay that price similar to a new car. The minute it's off the lot, it depreciates quickly, and trash trucks are no different. Previously, we had trouble finding a used vehicle because, number one, when the market gets strong and there's just none out there, we can't find any. And then the last time we tried to do this, the sweet spot, if you will, for the year of truck and the things like warranties and your comfort level with purchasing a used truck, it just, we just were not comfortable making a purchase. And I think we finally got to the point where we found that sweet spot, which is a newer vehicle not paying full price, and yet still have such things as a powertrain warranty to take advantage of. So there were, we could tell, there were several vehicles out on the street. We put a bid out and got a few different options, all very similar years, as you can see from the bid results. One vendor specifically, but we had multiple options to pick from. So we're looking to get a 2017 that, again, is still under warranty through December of 2019 and/or 100,000 miles. It'll be the timeline that we have to worry about. It won't be the mileage. So we're excited to have something that actually has a transferable powertrain warranty associated with it. And we're familiar with this group that submitted bids, because this is the vendor that we, that we used when we rented these trucks several years ago. So we're familiar with their trucks, we're familiar with them, which I think is a positive as well. We talked about as a city looking at used or leasing these vehicles instead of purchasing them one time. And then the year that we explored that, and then we went to try to go out and find trucks to use for our curbside leaf pickup, and they were all gone because multiple communities in a specific state grabbed them all up. I remember City of Van Arbor struggling because that's the game that they played. So we found that purchasing and having these vehicles in our hands is very beneficial to us based on our past experiences. So I think we're off the lease or the renting bandwagon, and we'd like to keep about three of these vehicles on hand. So I'm happy to answer any questions specifically about the bids.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard, are you okay with the compressed specs that you get to look at here? There's normally a couple pages.
Well, I'll have to, I'll have to be okay. But I do have, I do have a question, which you probably can't answer. And that is, these three vehicles that we got out of the bid, all, I would guess they all came out of the same fleet. Because two of the VIN numbers are sequential.
Oh, my God.
It is, you know, why are they coming available? That's a strange, you know.
This is a company that rents these vehicles out, and so then they post them, they're available to look at. And so what, from time to time, there could be 12 on there, or there could be zero on there. So they're in the renting business. They buy, as I understand, hundreds of these trash trucks and rent them out nationwide. So we've tried to follow it to get a period of time where we know that there's some good vehicles coming out.
All three of these look good. I think you've selected the best one of the three from looking at the specs and the hours and the engines that they've got, so.
And it's important to point out that Sean Young, our foreman, went to Cleveland, Ohio, and spent some time looking at these vehicles firsthand, running them, operating them. So we're not going in totally blind. Obviously, it's a 2017, you have a little bit of comfort level. But Sean went down there and spent some time in Cleveland looking at them as well. And he's, he picked the one that he thought was the best out of the options provided.
Okay. Additional questions, comments? Councilwoman Henan?
Yeah, I just wanted to observe that this is replacing a 1989 vehicle, so we really do try and make use of the resources we have. try and make use of the resources we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. And to piggyback off that a little bit, so what would be the estimated lifespan of the rear loader truck? Is it something similar to what we saw?
Yeah, I would guess in that 10-year type range is probably a fair estimate. You know, the 1989, we just can't even get parts anymore for that Packer unit. I mean, they're just not out there. So, and some of you may have noticed the trade-in clause in the contract, not very much money. And we don't intend to use that trade-in at this point. I think our best bet is to send that old Packer to the public auction. I think we can probably do a little bit better than the amount that was noted there. So, we'll keep our current, we'll keep the 1989 until the new one comes in. We may even keep it through the leaf season, just to make sure that, you know, we've got, we can get through that season, and then we'll let the 1989 go.
Are there any other adaptable uses throughout the year besides leaf pickup? Or is that pretty much it?
We've used it a little bit for rubbish in the past for various reasons. So, they do have other benefits to us. It helps us, you know, with other communities too, when they get into pinch points as well. I know Royal Oak has a few, so we could potentially, you know, trade equipment and do those sort of things as well. But they're primarily used for curbside leaf pickup. So, that's absolutely the primary purpose.
Thank you.
We do not want to use them any other time, because...
We know what that means.
Quick question. Do we have to pick this up, or do they deliver it?
They're delivering it to us.
When? Tomorrow?
I don't know about tomorrow, but the call will be made and letter sent.
What is the typical timeline?
I think they said, was it two weeks was in the bid? I always make them write it down, so...
It was one week.
Yeah. It would be, it will be a quick turnaround.
Okay. All right, great. Seeing no additional questions or comments, everybody seems to be on board. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6018?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6118, matter of awarding the contract for the Catalpa Sewer Project to the lowest qualified bidder, FDM Contracting Incorporated of Shelby Township, Michigan, in an amount of $215,961, with an additional $21,596,000 for construction contingencies, for a total of $237,556.01.
Is there a motion to approve M-6118?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Dean.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Henan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is the first and two related items. Enrollment in the SAW program, the state program that we secured back in 2013 continues to yield fruit. It continues to set the course for our planned maintenance of our sewer system. And this is one of those projects that unfortunately, we're unable to address through cure-in-place piping, but we'll actually have to physically replace a section of sewer. Both Derek and Roland Alex from HRC are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. So, this item has been before you, it came before you for design services for this. So, we identified an area that we could not line but had to make, you know, physical digging repairs on. So, we've got two, what I'll call, spot repairs on this sewer that have to be dug up and repaired. And then, once those are done, that whole section of sewer will be lined in our traditional method of annual lining. So, this project does both the point repairs, the physical sewer lining of the pipe, and then all the associated pavement and restoration work. So, we've gone out to bid twice on this project. The first time, unfortunately, yielded no takers, not a single bid. So, we put it back out on the street and thankfully did receive two bidders on it. Although the pricing came in higher than we anticipated, you know, that's, the market is the market, and so I don't think it's worthwhile at this point to continue to wait. I would rather just move forward with it. It's time to make these repairs before something else happens. So, we were on a, we're anxious to get this done and move forward with the project. And certainly, Roland can talk a little bit about some of the details about it. But the contractor for the project, FDM, was the low bidder on Harvard as well. So, we are familiar with them. Again, there were two bids, and they were the lowest qualified bidder. So, we're recommending moving forward with them at this time. Schedule-wise, real quick, just to hit on a couple of big, I guess, of the major items. So, we're going to look to meet with the contractor soon to talk about schedule. Obviously, it would benefit us to try to get this done as soon as possible, potentially before school starts. That would be the perfect scenario. But obviously, we need to make sure that the contractor is able to do that. This isn't, you know, a several-month project. This is work that can be done in a relatively short period of time, but everything has to be in place in order to do that. So, we want to sit down with the contractor, talk about schedule, and then certainly, we will be sharing that schedule, once it's known, with the public via the website, via hand-delivered flyers and e-blasts and those sort of things. So, schedule is to be determined, as noted in my memo, and we'll get back with you shortly on that, to make sure that we're all on the same page relative to when we're starting and when we're finishing. Obviously, we've got rainbows coming up as well, so there is a very tight window there, but we're going to try like hell to see if we can get it done, or at least the major road impact portions of the project done in time. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there's more questions about this, and we can, Roland and I can answer those.
Additional questions?
I've got, thank you. I have two questions for Roland. I think they're both typos. In your bid spec, you got an alternative for HDPE, water main pipe, place of ductile iron. I don't think that's supposed to be in there.
That would be a typo, correct, sir.
Okay. And the other one would be on the top of your HRC fee breakdown, where you got the project name is the Coolidge Water Main Extension.
Again, yes, we were probably rushing to get this done in time. So, yes, that references another project that is ongoing with the city. Thank you for pointing that out.
Good on the actual project that we're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, it's expensive, but it's the way it is right now. You use the standard estimating techniques, and the market doesn't agree with it, so...
It is considered a very small job with a lot of different components, from digging to lining to pavements to restoration, I mean, but just small pieces of all of those. It's probably not a very attractive project out in the open market.
Is FDM going to do the lining themselves, or are they going to contract with our current line?
It'd be a subcontractor. They do not do lining.
Okay. I didn't think so.
Councilwoman Gavin?
You kind of answered most of my first question about kind of why the costs were so much more than the engineering estimate initially. I guess my second question is, and whether it be because, you know, maybe it's not that attractive of a project, or timing, or a host of the other reasons that you had indicated, is this something that we're finding that is probably just more of a one-off in this situation? Or is this something that maybe needs to be looked at being reanalyzed for a lot of these projects that maybe we've already estimated for some of these projects?
I don't view it as, I view it as a very unique situation more than a bigger project. I mean, it's such a small job. I just think that it's just, folks are not interested in those kind of jobs. So, you know, I don't think for us to bid it again or go through that process again is going to be beneficial. And meanwhile, time just keeps ticking away as well. So, I'm certainly comfortable moving forward. I don't think it's a chronic thing for us. We certainly haven't seen that type of thing in other projects, so I don't believe it's a chronic thing. You know, you hear about trucking costs going up and other things that may be a part of this too. So, we've got to keep our eye on it. But, you know, we've got the Coolidge Water Main Project that's going to be starting up soon, so that'll be another indicator for us about that. But I see this as being more of a unique situation than...
Yeah, it seems project-specific, but...
It does, it does. And I'm happy that we got two bids, because it allowed us to at least have some sense of, you know, that pricing, right? And if you saw them real far off, then that makes you extremely nervous as well. But they were not that. I mean, they were both within, you know, a similar boundary, so...
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Henan?
Thank you. There's a couple of trees that look like they'd be in the way. If they're removed, are they going to be replaced?
Good question. And so, there's two trees that were identified in the contract that appear to be within our scope of construction that will likely have to be removed. There just isn't a way around it. So, what we've done is I've already allocated for, you know, more than two trees in our fall tree planting program for this project. So, very similar to Harvard, I've already got trees that we'll be ordering to be able to plant new trees, again, where it's the best spot for it, after the fact. More trees than we're taking down, similar to Harvard. So, we're hoping, working with the residents, that we can do that.
And I know I asked, last time this came up, if we saw any similar problems elsewhere in the city. The answer was no. Do we know what caused the problems here? Any ideas, and if it was preventable?
Not specifically, and Roland chime in, no. We haven't seen anything like this, where you've got, basically, it's just deformed to the point where a liner is just not feasible. So, we're not aware of any of those. It's always a potential possibility, and that's why when we're going through and doing the regular work that we're doing, if we come across another section like this, that we bring it to your attention, things can change quickly. And even though we're through our pipes roughly every three years, every pipe every three years, you know, things can change within that period of time. So, you know, to say that we'll never have to do this again, I certainly can't say it. But keep in mind that we've got 30% of our sewers structurally lined, so that feels pretty good. But obviously, another pipe in that other 70% could potentially show this, and we'd want to jump on it quickly as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Alex, anything you'd like to add on this item before we move to the next item, which is still on this item?
No, not really. If in the future, we find there are more than one location, it might be advantageous to bid this together for a few different spot locations. Might see some better pricing, but like Derek mentioned, we're not aware of any of those right now. It's just something to consider for the future, trying to package a few of these together. You might get better pricing.
Okay. Thank you. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6118?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. With that, we will move on to the next one. Ms. Boucher, please read item number eight on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-6218, matter of approving a scope of work for the Catalpa Sewer Project Construction Engineering Services in an amount of $19,333 to the city's engineers, Helble Roth and Clark Incorporated, HRC.
Is there a motion to approve M-6218?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support. Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Mr. Mayor, this is merely a continuation of the same conversation we were having, so I defer to the experts.
So, similar to Harvard, we want to make sure we have full-time construction observation, inspection on the project, material testing, all the things that we want to make sure that we've got a quality product in the end. So, we utilize HRC for those services. So, this is the construction engineering portion of that work to cover inspection, project layout, staking, those sort of items that are associated with construction.
From the same budget item, or is this coming from a different budget item?
This is coming from a different budgeted line item for engineering services. So, it's under the same water sewer fund account, but it is an actual different account number than construction services.
Questions on this? All about the project we just spoke of? Okay. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6218?
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-6318, matter of approving the purchase of two 2018 Ford Police Interceptor Utility AW, all-wheel-drive marked police vehicles for $28,473 each, $56,946 total, and one 2018 Ford F-250 Crew Cab XLT Pickup Truck for $39,528 for the Department of Public Safety from Signature Ford, 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 48867, at a total cost of $96,474 from the vehicle's account, 101310985000.
Is there a motion to approve M-6318?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, like previous items, is part of our planned replacement cycle on our capital goods. These are the vehicles that we're discussing, purchasing this evening, replace existing vehicles, so we're not expanding the fleet. It is an Owasso contractor, but we did actually get to them through the Macomb County Cooperative bid. We were on both the Oakland County and the Macomb in order to get the best pricing possible. And I'd say credit goes to Ron for continuing to keep our fleet updated, and he developed the specs for this. You'll see inside this packet, there are not only the memos, but the vehicle specs themselves on this. So, I'm sure Mr. Blanchard will have something to ask about, so...
He called me this morning.
Chief Kane's available to answer any questions Council may have.
Chief, is there anything additional?
Nothing additional, other than, as Mr. Baumgartner said, Ron Gabriel and Jim at DPW do a fabulous job keeping our cars to where we get the most uses we can out of them. The pickup truck especially, that's a two, we're replacing a 2003 model, so that it's given us 15 years of service. We plan on this pickup giving us just as many.
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you. I had a question, I asked it this morning, and I already got the answer, and that was the axle ratio on this vehicle, and we did find out that...
Wish I had no clue what that even was.
Super important.
And I was concerned it was going to be a 402, but it's a 373, so we're in good shape.
Thank you for that. Additional questions or comments? Not necessarily about the specs, but about capital improvement program moving through? Okay, a couple new police utility vehicles and the pickup. Thank you, Chief. And tell Ron and the crew, thank you as well for doing your due diligence and getting all this prepared.
Just a comment on it, Ron does an excellent job of spec-ing these vehicles. He goes through it in great detail, so it's good to have him doing that.
With that, will Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6318?
Henan.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
And Turbrack.
Yes. All right. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-2718, matter of adopting the Oakland County Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Is there a motion to approve R-2718?
Motion to approve.
By Councilmember Blanchard with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick, brief introduction before turning it over again to the experts. Including your packet is both the resolution and the memo detailing why we go through this process. It is in a five-year cycle. And my summary of the hazardous mitigation plan is it helps us address all sorts of terrible, if and when it occurs. So, there's a lot more that goes into that. Councilmember Blanchard and Matt Kane and the officers have been instrumental in making sure that Berkeley is prepared for whatever may come, and their efforts are plaudable.
Chief, or who wants to?
You know what? I would probably defer to the expert experts.
Okay. This is one of the things required by the National Incident Management System, as the city manager said, it's a five-year cycle. We have our own plan, which is a support plan. Basically, it's a draft, and we keep all our notes on everything that we want, so we can roll them in it every five years. The federal government says you are supposed to look at all of the risks in your area and determine the severity of those risks, the potential for those risks, and then if they come up to be critical, you have to put in a plan to mitigate those risks. The thing about that is that if you are writing grants for any of this stuff, you have to have it in the plan, or you don't have a chance of getting a grant. So, we looked at our plans, we assessed all the stuff from 2012 and all the way back to 2005, looked at. The big thing that we have in here, which we've just completed, is our generator. That has been an ongoing problem for a couple of years. We finally got it replaced, and we mitigated that hazard of not being able to function under a power outage. One of the other things that we put in there this year, and that was shelters. We have shelters in the area, which we can use in emergencies. We said in the hazardous mitigation plan that one of the things we should do is we should inventory our shelters, determine anything that's needed in those shelters, and then write a grant to try and get that. And that covers a lot of things. Some people that have shelters have even written grants to get portable radios to use in a sheltering situation if you have large crowds, and all kinds of things like that. Portable generators, that type of stuff. So, we've got that stuff in the plan now, so that we can analyze what we have for shelters and cover that. We've also done a lot on training, so we can write grants for training, because we have, we do training on pipeline emergencies, we do training for all of the officers on a number of different things, and that's all covered in here as a risk, as lack of training of personnel. So, it's all rolled in there. We're just approving the county's plans, it's six or 700 pages.
758.
The county plans. If you want to read it, go ahead. And the other thing I'd like to comment on is the school district is also in there. And we have worked closely, I went down to the school district, made presentations down there, and worked closely with them in developing their input for the plan. And so, all their input was in on time, as was ours, by the end of the year. It took till now for FEMA to say, "It's a good plan, and now we can adopt it." So, that's why we're doing it now.
Huge job by Oakland County Homeland Security, who does a fabulous job. They're great to work with. And most of the work for this plan was done prior to my arrival by Councilmember Blanchard and Lieutenant Crum, who are both PEMS, which helps a lot. So, thank you very much to them for helping too, along with Homeland Security.
Yeah, certainly thank you to Councilmember Blanchard and prior to you, Lieutenant Crum. It's noted in here that Berkeley specifically gave input to a section of that 758 that you and Mike were a part of, so we thank you for everything that you've done in keeping us on track.
It was developed by what they call the LEPC, the Local Emergency Planning Council, which Mike and I set on periodically, not all the time, but whenever there's something to deal with local communities, then we attend those meetings in Pontiac.
Excellent. Well, thank you for that and keeping us on track and making sure that all of our hazards are properly mitigated. With that, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-2718?
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Ordinance number O-1118, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 138, Article 6, Division 7, Site Plan Review of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances.
Is there a motion to approve O-1118?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilmember Gavin.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From time to time, the Planning Commission has been asked to review site plan changes that involve only the addition of, or changing of an accessory structure. The accessory structure portion of the zoning ordinance is very tightly defined. Planning Commission felt that it's more appropriate for this to be deferred to the administration to handle this, as long as it falls within the very tight restrictions in the city's ordinance. Anything that falls outside of it is absolutely the purview of the Planning Commission, and will be forwarded as such. But in this scenario, they make a recommendation for subsection 3 here, making review of accessory structures and administrative review process and approval based on the code itself. So, the Planning Commission, and as is their normal process, reviewed this. They held a public hearing. They received no comments on the public hearing, and they recommend adoption to you today. Tim McLean, our Community Development Director, has included a memo, as well as the text of the ordinance in your packet.
Mr. Director?
Well, I think the city manager said it better than I would have. This will hopefully free up just a little bit of space on the docket for the Planning Commission. This allows for quicker review of accessory structures. What spurred this conversation was a request for site plan review for an accessory structure in the Commercial District, which was a little unusual. And it actually took up quite a bit of time, you know, with the Planning Commission, and they said, "Hey, why don't we make this an administrative item?" So, that's where we are today.
Okay. It was noted by the city manager, there was public hearing, there were no comments offered by the public, so what comments do we have right now? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a question, would you define accessory structure, so everybody knows what we're talking about?
We're talking something like a shed or a garage, that's kind of your typical accessory structure.
Another structure that is not the main structure.
Right.
Councilmember Henon?
Sorry, I didn't give you a heads-up on this question, because you may not have the answer off the top of your head, but do you know how many cases, you know, like this come before the Planning Commission each year? How many this might clear off their docket?
Not too many. The case that really spurred the conversation actually started in September of 2017, and the site plan did not come before Planning Commission to get approved. I believe it was March or April of this year, so it took up a bit of time, more so than your garden variety accessory structure.
Okay. Additional questions or comments? Ms. Boucher, I will ask you to call the roll on O-1118.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. O-1118. We'll move on. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 12, please?
Motion number M-6418, matter of approving a multi-community planning grant cost-sharing agreement.
Is there a motion to approve M-6418?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Gavin. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great example of City of Berkeley joining with regional partners to try to address issues that affect not just ourselves, but our partner communities as well. The City of Berkeley, Huntington Woods, and Oak Park all jointly pursued a grant and received a grant through SEMCOG, which is an acronym for the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments. They are a great partner to have, they're a fantastic data organization, but obviously, one of the things that we're most fond of is the fact that they support initiatives like this through grant dollars. The city's portion of this, after, let's say, all the other communities help share the cost in, is a low, low price of $605. And so, this, we do have a budget for this item, it will go under our existing community planning budget, so we're excited to work on this. Tim is, again, available for any comment on this, but primarily, we're looking to talk about Coolidge from 9 all the way to 12, elements of green infrastructure, pedestrian crossings, and road diets, looking for opportunities for each of those to be improved or expanded upon, and then also 11 Mile from Woodward all the way to Greenfield, which is, you know, all of these are borders with Huntington Woods and Oak Park, so excited to work with some of our partners in the area.
Thank you. Mr. McLean, do you have anything you would like to add?
This is just a very exciting project. This grant will allow us to study the effects of green infrastructure on Coolidge and 11 Mile. It'll also explore the feasibility of road diet as well.
Ms. Carmody, is there anything you would like to add to this?
Sure. So, this came out of, actually, when, you know, I started meeting with Kimberly Morone and Amy Sullivan from Huntington Woods and Oak Park almost a year ago, to look at the road diet from 696 and to 12 Mile. And then, we, our goal at that point in time was to apply for a small TAP grant that would allow us to do the road diet, which was just the restriping and signage, and then also for the DDA to throw in some wayfinding. But along that way, we ran across that SEMCOG grant and decided that we would apply for it. And SEMCOG, actually, if you look at the grant, it ticks off almost everything that, you know, the state's looking for in that grant. It ticks off alternative transportation, it ticks off sustainability, green. I mean, when we actually called SEMCOG to talk to the grant facilitator, he said, "Wow, you guys, this is amazing." He says, you know, A, it's three communities really working together, and B, you're hitting all these things that we care about. So, we were pretty excited as three communities, and it's nice, because the DDA and the city are actually splitting that cost, so that's why it's 605 to you guys and 605 to the DDA. The DDA's board signed off on this at their board meeting this past week. Huntington Woods will sign off on it tomorrow, but it is a nice cost ship, you know, approach to trying to do this planning process that I think will be a critical component of looking at Coolidge and 11 Mile moving forward, so it's pretty exciting.
Just to clarify something that Vivian just mentioned, in terms of all the different boxes this ticks. So, Southeast Michigan Traffic Safety Plan, Bicycle and Pedestrian Travel Plan for Southeast Michigan, Access to Core Services in Southeast Michigan, Regional Transportation Plan for Southeast Michigan Partnership for Prosperity, Economic Development Plan, Green Infrastructure Vision for Southeast Michigan, and we even checked off other and specified a few other ways. The only one that we didn't was Water Resources for this plan. But this is a great example of regional collaboration and being able to work with our neighbors and try to find a way that, you know, mutually is certainly beneficial to all of us. If EVIP were still around, we would have a great shot at jumping through those groups with this regional collaboration. They would love us, but it's actually a good thing it's not around anymore. Additional questions or comments for anybody here? Councilmember Blanchard?
Just a question on procedure. Under Partner Communities and Agencies, it lists City of Berkeley, Berkeley DDA, and then it goes on to list Oak Park and everything, but all the other cities list their Planning Commission on it. Is there a reason our Planning Commission was left off, or does it have to be? I don't know. I mean, those cities, it's on there for the other cities, but not on there for Berkeley, so I'm just concerned.
Well, for Oak Park, I mean, they don't have a DDA, so, you know, Kimberly is kind of their Community Economic Development Director, so she's leading that part. And then, same thing for Huntington Woods. I would guess that that's kind of who that authority is. I could get clarification. We just know that Tim, you know, when we started looking at 11 Mile, that's when we said, "Hey, you know, let's bring Tim on board as the Community Development Director," and then the DDA obviously is handling the Coolidge, so.
I don't know if it needs to be on there, but the other cities have their Planning Commission listed, and then they also, Huntington Woods Environmental Advisory Committee's on there. We got one of those too. I didn't know if that should all be on there or not.
Well, but that was just part of the grant application. If you read the grant application, we brought all of those in too, into the actual application. So, I mean, maybe that was just some language that Kim picked up, but you were, you know, what they wanted to know, who all the stakeholders were, and so we all listed those. We did list the Environmental Advisory Board, we listed Planning Commission, we listed anybody and everybody, because that added to the, you know, the narrative of the grant.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments? Councilmember Henon?
So, just to clarify, this isn't a commitment that we're going to do a road diet or any of these projects, but we're just examining their feasibility and if they make sense.
That is correct, and based on the results of that, there could be opportunities down the road for a TAP grant for implementation of, you know, possible recommendations.
Okay. And then, there's some discussion of stormwater diversion and green infrastructure. Could you define what's meant by green infrastructure in this context?
Sure. Some examples of green infrastructure would be like a bioswale, like a rain garden, porous pavement would be an example of green infrastructure as well. Porous pavement would assist with stormwater drainage, which, as we know, can be an issue.
All right. Thank you.
Additional questions? Seeing none? Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6418?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. And thank you to everybody who was involved in this, Tim, Vivian, and Matt for making this happen. Ms. Boucher, that brings us to number 13. Please read item number 13 on tonight's agenda.
Motion number M-6518, matter of approving the appointment of Deputy City Manager Dar Shellstricken Love as Officer Delicate, Finance Director Ginger Burke Miller as Officer Alternate, and Brian Bemis as Employee Delicate, representing the City of Berkeley Municipal Employees Retirement System, MERS, at the 2018 MERS Annual Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-6518?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman, with support from Councilmember Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, we send a delegation from the City of Berkeley to this conference. It's a fruitful conference. MERS is the pension system for the city, not only for our employees, but employees across the entire state. So, it's good to stay up to date on their current best practices, things that they have coming down the road, especially the role that they're taking statewide, as the legislature has turned its attention towards pensions and retiree benefits. So, we have a solid group of people that are, will represent our community well at this conference, so we're excited to send them.
Questions or comments? Seeing none? Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6518?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
And Turbrack?
Yes. Looks like we have made it to the communications portion of our evening. Councilmember Henon, I believe, is up first.
Yes, Mayor.
All right. So, Atlanta tonight is the deadline for the city tree planting, is this Friday, August 17th. So, if you want a tree this year in your tree lawn, contact DPW, or you'll have to wait again until next year. And then, I'm really looking forward to Cruise Fest and Dream Cruise coming up this weekend as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Coolidge Task Force did not meet in July, but will be meeting in August, this Thursday, actually, at 8:00 AM, second floor of the Conference Room of Public Safety. Planning Commission did hold the public hearing on the site plan review ordinance that obviously came before us tonight, as well as had a discussion about the process for the master plan update, the scope of work, what it should be, what it will be, where the resources might come from, and how it'll interact with different work and studies that are being done throughout the city already. And then, the Planning Commission also did elect some new, a new chair, a new vice chair, and a new secretary. Kristin Kapilansky as chair, Marty Smith as vice chair, and Mark Richardson as secretary. So, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dean?
Movie Night in the Park was a huge success this past Saturday, August 11th, with many families in attendance. The Ice Cream Social is Tuesday, August 28th, at 6:00 PM in the Community Center. Touch a Truck is Saturday, September 15th, from 10:00 AM to noon in the arena parking lot, and the Fall Program signup is underway. It has been an amazing summer with all the Summerfest events, and the Parks and Recreation Department is ever so grateful to the sponsors, whose generosity allows Parks and Rec to put these events on at no cost to participants. So, thanks, a big thank you to the sponsors.
In Mayor Protem's absence, I do have a statement. I have an update. Mayor Protem is obviously not with us today. unspecified injury. All I can tell you is that the story that I heard, where there were multiple ninjas and Kung-Fu involved in this, he's going to be okay, but that's all I'm at liberty to discuss right now. Technology Advisory Committee, thanks to our inaugural volunteers for helping boot up the committee. Did you get that? Okay. First meeting will be Wednesday, August 22nd, at 6:30 PM at the library. They'll be discussing the committee charter and charting a course for the next six months. Kudos to Stan for his leadership and vision in making this committee a reality. Historical Committee, the Berkeley Historical Museum has a display now of auto businesses in Berkeley, celebrating the Cruise Fest and the Dream Cruise. On display are photos of early car dealerships. Berkeley had a Ford dealership, a Plymouth dealership, and a Kaiser Frasier dealership, all on 12 Mile. There are pictures of some of our many gas stations, repair shops, and auto parts stores as well. There's also a photo up of the old Secretary of State office that used to be on Woodward. Plus on display is every one of the Cruise Fest t-shirts. The night of the Cruise Fest, the museum will open at 5:30 and stay open during and after the parade, so you can check out all of these, all the cool things they have in there. As well as a display, the museum will have parked in front two classic automobiles, 1934 Plymouth and the only yellow Shelby Cobra ever made. So, if you want to check out those, better head to the museum, find those cars parked out there. Now, onto the DDA. Thanks to everybody for participating in the latest Art and About event. Again, that is every second Friday this summer and fall. event. Again, that is every second Friday this summer and fall. Coming soon is the Downtown Planning Process, and that's going to kick off after Labor Day. Also, public input is welcome on the recent Coolidge Complete Streets Discussion. And if you need any more details and to check out anything related to the DDA, please go to the website, downtownberkeley.com. There is no quote, and that is all. Councilmember Stedman?
Okay. The library has a few things remaining during the rest of August. Tomorrow, there's going to be a presentation at 6:30 by a person who's been to China three times, and, and she's going to present on her experiences there. Also, on the 14th, at 12:30 in the afternoon, is the Afternoon Book Club. A Gentleman in Moscow is the book that they've read. On Monday, August 20th, at 6:30, they're having Marimba Mania program. And they're going to have a person there telling you about the history of the marimba. And that sounds very interesting. On the 30th, they're going to have a movie at the library. And four friends in a book club are inspired to spice things up after reading Fifty Shades of Grey, with each of them in a different romantic situation. The women gather inspiration and tips. I'm not going to repeat that.
That's good self-censorship.
Okay. So anyways, library has lots of things going on.
Everyone's going to be at the library tomorrow.
The Beautification Committee has, began their work on the bus stop at Webster. And I didn't participate in it yesterday. I see it's, I drove by it today, and it's almost finished, and it looks very, very lovely. The Citizens Engagement Committee still always wants ideas for how they can engage with the community, because that is their sole purpose as a committee. And thank you. Have a great time this weekend.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to talk a little bit about Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest safety. We have, have had a fantastic record of safety for the last, what, 23 years? I think the only major injury we had was a lady that got a broken leg because she got hit by a golf cart. So, let's keep it up. Stay alert. Watch what you're doing. There are a lot of crazy people out there and a lot of crazy drivers. So, just be careful and watch what's going on. The Chamber is having the 2018 Berkeley Pub Crawl on Thursday. So, if you don't want to go to all those children's activities that Councilmember Dean spoke about, there's a pub crawl. It's from 5:30 to midnight. It's a progressive celebration of Berkeley's nightlife, restaurant, and food fair. You can either burn off calories by walking from venue to venue, or take the free shuttle bus to ensure you hit each delicious spot by the event end. Ticket prices include appetizer, drink discounts. Be sure to register by August 8th. Well, we missed that one. To guarantee your t-shirt size, registration after August 8th, t-shirts will be handed out first come, first served basis. The cost is $20, $3 at the door, and the venues are the American Legion, Amici's, Bagger Dave's, Berkeley Common, Chris Spelly's, Hartfield's, Omar's, Patrick J's, Republica, and 24 Seconds. So, maybe I'll see somebody there along the way somewhere, or in the ditch or something. So, that's, that's it from the Chamber.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do want to congratulate the city clerk on a well-run election in the face of grave adversity. But again, this is, this is a highly-trained professional who passed that professionalism on to each of her poll workers. And despite running out of the pre-printed ballots, initiated contingency plans, and, like I said, overcame quite a bit to make it, I think, our most successful primary election in, in many, many decades. So, with, with, I think, over 40% turnout, which we're very happy for. So, we want to keep that momentum going, and I, and we continue to put out information on our, on our discussions on the infrastructure millage, as well as the Community Center bond. If you want to, any more information, visit yourberkleyyourvote.com, or the city's website has a Your Berkeley, Your Vote header specifically on the city's website. You get updates on, on meetings and on information. We've been going through and trying to answer any of the frequently asked questions that are popping up online. There's a fantastic, robust conversation going on on several social media platforms. And so, we just want to keep the momentum going all the way into November, and look forward to that. So, and then also, last item, I want to thank our Communications Director, as well as several other community volunteers, whether, whether they're from in Berkeley or, or outside of Berkeley. But city produced a Rat video. While it doesn't sound all that exciting, it's, I think it's got somewhere around 9,000 views so far, and it's been shared multiple times. I think 125 times the last, last time I checked in on it. But great information there on how to avoid utilizing poisons to, to try to mitigate some of our road and issues that some homes across the city may have. So, but if you haven't seen it yet, go be part of the 9,000 strong, whether you've seen it already. Great information in there. And again, it was very much a grassroots campaign. So, it was great to pull in so many community volunteers on that. And that's all I have.
Ms. Boucher, do we have any debrief, other debrief from the election?
I've, I've, nothing at this moment, Mayor. Thank you.
It's in the rearview right now. Okay. Madam Attorney?
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. You guys have done a wonderful job checking off everything on my list here. Pastor Dunlap started the meeting talking about the incredible turnout. I am 90% sure the county is not going to make the same mistake again in the November election. Can't say 100%, but voters are very energized. We saw a great turnout here. It was not just in Berkeley, it was across the county and across the state, actually across the country. And I, oh, those are the numbers right there. Thank you. 42, 44, 39, 40, 39, 37, 38 voter turnout in each of the precincts. So, those are, were in the low 20s typically for, for an August primary. So, we nearly doubled almost across the board what was typically expected in the City of Berkeley. So, that's great. It means people are coming out. It means folks are going to come out in November again, not only to have opinions on federal and state issues, but also on our own city issues that the city manager just mentioned. So, go to the website to find out more about them. And I do also want to congratulate on that, on the tremendous job that she did in the face of adversity that was not at all her making her fault. That was, there was nothing that we could have done differently other than what we did, being able to react very quickly and make sure that every resident in, in Berkeley had a chance to have their vote, their voice heard, and that was accomplished. So, congratulations. She did a great job on that. I'm excited to, to see everybody on Friday. Cruise Fest is, is one of my, you know, favorite events of the year. And it's not that, at the risk of getting in trouble here, I'm not a huge car guy. Like, it's just not, like, for me, like, I send the mayor's message. An 85, 86 Plymouth, like, that's a classic car for me. The reason that I love this event so much is because so many folks come back to Berkeley or come to Berkeley, specifically just to have fun on 12 Mile and watch the parade, and then hang out after. It, it's just a tremendous event. It's an event that I know that my kids remember. It's something that I remember in high school. I was in high school on this. All got, you know, all got rolling. It's just a great time, and people are happy, and they have a great time, and they do it responsibly as well. So, I'm very excited for that, looking forward to that. City manager mentioned the robust conversation on social media. There's pros and cons to everything. Those of you that know me know that I'm not a huge guy on social media. I don't like to, to get on there. And part of the reason is it's really, it's very easy to spin stories on social media. And we saw that play out in the past week here in the City of Berkeley regarding the Made in the Mitten Festival. And I felt that it was appropriate for me to address exactly why that happened, because I see a lot of comments that are accusing us of doing certain things, and they don't know the entire story. If you watched the last meeting, when we approved that festival, there was concern. There was objection from, from a couple of council members, not because we didn't want to have the event. We wanted to have the event. We're excited about the event. But because of the timeline, that we would have to have a very compressed timeline to, to pull off that event. And council made it very clear that there were certain conditions that already existed, and there were certain conditions that had to be met in order to have a successful event. The last thing that we are going to do in the city is, is have an event that either is going to make the city look bad, or an applicant, or, or the event, or the event look bad, because that's not what we want to do. But it came very clear that those conditions were not going to be met, and additional conditions were cropping up. So, we ultimately decided to rescind the approval, not because we didn't want to have the event, not because we just decided to cancel at the last minute, like some folks have said. Not at all the case. We wanted to have the event. We still want to have the event, but there was no way that it was going to happen successfully based on what was happening right now in the compressed timeline with the Cruise Fest. So, I'm not going to get into debates with anybody in the comment section on Facebook. Like, that is, to me, not where I would rather spend my time. If you want to have a conversation with me, feel free to call me or email me. I have no problem with that. But it's real easy to just get out there and say one side of the story. And I hope that the Made in the Mitten Festival does happen. I hope it happens in the City of Berkeley. I hope it happens at a time when we can really make sure that it's all planned out, and we have the support, not only for that, but we also have the conditions that need to be met on the city side to run a festival. But the, the fact of the matter is, we didn't just, you know, the narrative that the city just decided at the last minute, a week before, to rescind it and didn't care about the repercussions, that's patently false. It's absolutely not true. And I wanted to make sure that I got that message across as well. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Henon.
Support.
Support. Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henon?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
And Terbrack?
Yes. August 13th, 2018, meeting is adjourned. Okay. You sign those.